For June 13th, first thing is the approval of the agenda.
Move for approval.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion to second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval of the payment of bills and vouchers?
I would move.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion to approve the bills, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we move on to the first item on our agenda.
Mr. Chair, we missed a citizen here.
Oh, citizen concern, sorry. Any citizens here to be talk? Talk to about something that's not on the agenda?
I have nothing, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we got that covered too now. Request approval to hire two deputy auditors. All right. Good afternoon, Laurie.
Looks like I've got two retirees coming up, one in the beginning of July and one in the middle of August. So I'm requesting the ability to fill those positions. So I'm looking for the approval to hire two full-time deputy auditor.
That wouldn't require backfill, would it? Because you don't, or would it?
Well, there's a possibility I got two roster positions.
Okay.
So in that case, but generally no, I guess. I don't think the board will be interested anywhere.
Mr. Chair, I move the approval with backfill if necessary.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion to second to request approval to hire two deputy auditors. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All righty. Okay. Request approval for opioid position? Kathy? Oh, Rory's gonna do that one.
Maybe that's by design.
You know, we can still mute.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Tell more than that. Is that her special one?
Thanks, Jackie. Appreciate your behind me. We are here to request approval for the opioid position. We've had some conversations before this. Public health is, is assigned to be chief strategist for the opioid settlement monies and working within the community to determine some strategies. And so I'll let Rory talk through the strategies. We also have a salary calculation worksheet. So we had Darren calculate that starting July of this year and all of 2024. We initially, you know, at least we'll probably need three years, but we have the year and a half put together so you can see what the cost would be. And then I'll let, I'll turn it over to Rory to talk about our strategies.
So I'm gonna spend a little time just talking about what this would be so you can have a better sense of what we're asking for, what this person would be doing. And so as, as the chief strategist for our county, as directed by the state, our department and whomever we would hire would be charged with leading this coalition. Now, there is a fair amount of capacity in the community already. There is an existing coalition called the Red River Recovery Group that the Lotus Center, Essentia Health, Fargo Cast Public Health have been actively involved, as well as others. And so, but we, we want to, none of those have a dedicated person. And having led coalitions for more than the last decade, my experience is when, when you don't have somebody dedicated to lead an effort, it can flounder. It's less likely to advance the way it, way it could. And so we're here today asking for a full-time position through 2024 in hopes that there would be some opioid dollars and potentially some other partners would, would join us. And so what would this person do? First of all, there, there needs to be some sort of an assessment. We know that there's an issue. There are lots of different paths and ways that time could be spent. And so we need to determine for our communities, what is the best, what is the biggest issue? What is the greatest opportunity for us to make a difference? So there needs to be an assessment. Then connect with those who are already doing this work and who are already very knowledgeable about opioids and its different realms to determine the capacity to see where the, where the workers are. In my work with Rethink Mental Health, we made lots of our progress by identifying folks in the community who already had as part of their work tasks related to what we were hoping to accomplish with our, with our Rethink Mental Health initiative. And so it was easy for them to get the work done because it was part of their job. And so we think that exists. And so identifying capacity in our community is gonna be really important. And then with those key stakeholders, developing a plan, looking at the best practices, evidence-based practices, maybe some promising practices, and beginning to implement them, and then over the course have some informal and informal evaluation to determine if it's making a difference. We've heard from numerous sources, if you, if you haven't, opioids is a big issue that's not gonna get any better. The chief of police in Morehead said we can't arrest our way out of this. And so when we think of a multi-pronged approach, if you look at this handout, it says strategies to address the opioid epidemic. What our coalition leader, which I would be part of as well, but the person who would be hired to lead this would help guide discussions, would help guide work in the community to determine, would we be spending how much time and if we would be spending time under the umbrella of prevention? That's a key piece. We heard from the city was loud and clear that they had lots of thoughts about criminal justice. So that's one of the other domains where there's evidence that suggests we can, we can get ahead of or at least help to, to manage some of the opioid issue. Treatment and recovery is one of those domains, and harm reduction is the last one. And, and harm reduction is one that already has had quite a bit of work done with talks about overdose surveillance and overdose maps, syringe exchanges, a number of things that are being led by Fargo Cast Public Health. And so this isn't a short-term fix. We had asked, and when we had met with some subcommittees previously, that we thought we needed at least three years. This request includes a year and a half because of the funds that are available. Our hope is that there would be funding that would allow this to continue beyond that.
You said at the beginning that no one in the area has been in this type of position. Where do you expect to find someone in that?
Well, I mean, our work is entirely grant-funded, so when we find, when we, when we secure funding, we're always in search of folks who have some experience. So we have a person on staff right now who you may be familiar with, Sarah Dixon Hackey. She's been leading diversity and equity work. She's a seasoned veteran, she's good at what she does, and she's expressed some interest. She hasn't said this would be something that she wants to do, but that, that's one, potential. And ESU has a master's of public health program, and they put out some mature folks who have been valuable to us now and in the past, so.
All right.
Mr. Chair. I've had an opportunity to be in some of the conversations about this, leading up to this. So one of the problems we get in our community, as most communities that don't make an effort or have, is we've got good resources, but they're siloed. And the fact that we're in two states and we have one community to service only adds that problem, but we're all hands that address and that, and coordinating the efforts across the river. I like the fact that, that we're looking at a position here that's gonna be used to coordinate our response and coordinate with, with people that are already doing the work out in the field, but this is a very complicated thing. There's gonna be state funding. Not just opioid, but crystal meth is another issue in this community, particularly out in rural Clay County that's a problem. But we've gotta have somebody to coordinate these efforts, and somebody who's acting on behalf of the county at least can speak for the entire area in Minnesota that we're involved with. My personal experience, having been police chief in Morehead, is at least 80% of the problem is gonna be within the city of Morehead. But those are our citizens as well, and county resources are there for them. I hope that Morehead will partner with us and try and take some of this burden. I also think that if we get the right person in position, they're gonna be able to identify grant opportunities, because the money is gonna be out there. But I think primarily one of the issues that this can help address is not just look at it as a criminal justice issue. We have a need for resources in the jail to address the addiction in people, in the, are incarcerated, in probation. They need to have places to put their people, to get them clean. And we need to be able to respond to overdoses, and that's a public health issue. But I think this is really the approach we've been needing to get somebody in there who can coordinate the resources that are already on hand and identify what resources aren't there so that we can start addressing a very serious problem in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to backpedal a little bit here, you know, for people that might be watching too, I think Clay County, through all of these different opioid settlements, was to receive a little over $2 million total over a period, it was a long period of time, I think it's over 18 years. And with, with that in mind, quite some time ago, we as a board had made a decision to take approximately half of that and apply it towards our substance use facility, which would also be a benefactor to what you want to accomplish here. That would be another place that could be of assistance in doing this. And, you know, so that left, I think, $1.2 million for these types of things. Unfortunately, some of those dollars, they come in later. I know, I think with Kathy, I think we had the conversation, even in, and Rory too, I think we had the conversation even in ARPA about this. And, you know, I, I think we had talked about, you know, because the opioid dollars, the first opioid dollars coming in, they're gonna, they have to go towards the, the facility. And so the other dollars, and so, you know, so when we talked about, originally, by the way, these, these two came to us and wanted a half position for this, right? Am I correct on that?
Correct.
We did.
And, and, you know, I was, I flat out said, I think we're making a mistake, having this a half position. It's, it's too, there's too much that needs to be done. And, and this was, we're, I got, we're, I know Commissioner Abingro brought up Morehead, and I, I know Morehead has received opioid dollars too, and so we reached out to them as a potential partnership, and I think there's still gonna be dialogue on that, but there has been, to this point, there's been nothing decided on our request. But that does, that does not short sight what the position needs. And the position really does need a full-time. When you look at these four areas of prevention, criminal justice, let's see, the other one is treatment and recovery and harm reduction. We read in the paper every day about harm. Every day. It's something, you know, there's something going on. I was at a fundraiser for a, in West Fargo, for baseball, for a young person who had committed suicide. We need, we need to, we really need to get something going on this and something that has a, somebody who can coordinate the effort. We have a lot of different spokes all around, you know, in, in the community. But does the left hand know what the right hand is doing, or does the front wheel know what the back wheel's doing from, with dealing with spokes? But this is important and it's needed. You know, and I, I guess what I'm, what I'm thinking, because the ARPA, or the opioid dollars aren't available right away, that, you know, Commissioner Mojo's here now too, and I, you know, I, I really think that it, it makes sense for us to probably tack into your, that, those ARPA funds that you had for now, for this year and a half, I, I think we had talked about that, doing that to help fund that. And I, Commissioner Mojo is here now too, and she was part of that dialogue, but I think that's what we, and certainly funding it for the full-time with the hopes still on that, that we can have the other entities who are receiving these settlement dollars see the significance of this position and help, help with the funding.
And Mr. Chair and Commissioner Campbell, you do have the ARPA funding sheet, so it shows the ARPA money and what's been allocated to public health and others. So I know Commissioner Campbell at one meeting asked if we could use some of the ARPA funds that were allocated to public health, so we agreed to that.
Just for clarification, would we, are we talking about front-ending the money out of the ARPA fund, and as opioid settlement money comes in, we put it back into the public health reserves?
Well, I, I, I think, I think if, if that can happen, but I, I, you know, that might be wishful thinking, you know, just, just because, you know, and maybe Steve can speak to what we've received already in opioid funds and how long it's gonna take just to get that first million that we have dedicated to the building project. And, you know, and by that time, our, our probably deadline for the use of all ARPA funds will probably be up before we could see opioid dollars. So I don't, I don't, I don't necessarily see that these opioid funds will be able to reimburse us. I could be wrong on that, but.
What exactly is the status on Morehead? I know they were gonna be approached. Is it just they're still considering it, or is there a discussion underway?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Abingro, we met with the city of Morehead a couple months back. They'd indicated as part of their budget process that they would be having that discussion. I did reach out to Mr. Molly recently, and they have had initial discussions, but haven't had, have made their final decision yet at this point. They have further meetings, I think, next, early.
We did, we did, Commissioner Abingro, we did meet, it was Commissioner Mojo and I, and Kathy, and Rory, and Steve, and Dan, Molly, and I can't remember, I don't know if any council members were there, I can't remember. I don't think there was.
Well, they certainly, you know, are, this would be a great advantage to them because the, the addiction problem is massive, and, not massive, I'm not gonna get dramatic, but of the problem, the majority of it is in Morehead. And this would benefit their efforts both in law enforcement and in, in helping the community. So I, I hope they'll take some of the opioid settlement funds they've got and pitch, pitch it in here.
Are you looking for one position? Is this a temporary position, or?
No. It's, it's one position, it would be full-time.
Ordered by ARPA funds and opioid funds?
Well, ARPA funds initially, because we wouldn't have any opioid funds at this time, it's kind of dribbling in. So there's not opioid funds to, to be available. Plus initially, we need to provide opioid funds for our substance use facility. So it would be ARPA funds to begin with. And we, you know, we initially thought three years to begin with. What I've shown here is, I had Darren set up the, the salary calculation for '23 and through '24, just to kind of get a sense of what the costs would be. And then we would, of course, in addition to the salary and benefits, we would certainly need some operating costs as well, operating funds.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair. Thank you. First of all, I'm just glad that you all showed up at 5:00, and the meeting did not start, start at 5:30 like I thought it did. So I apologize for being tardy. I am really excited to have this for board discussion today. You know, part of the conversation earlier was that this had been through committee and decide, you know, talked about the huge need and, and where could we focus efforts? And I think it was Commissioner Campbell that said, this is not something that we can deal with, with a 10-hour-a-week position. This is something that's far more. And yes, we have approached other municipalities to see if they'd be interested in joining the fight, if you will, for what this job would really encompass. I think they're grappling with how, what the focus for each municipality they'd like it to be. We can't wait any longer to have some boots on the ground to deal with this issue. So the question in regard to opioid funding really was early on, when we said, we need to have this position, let's find funding however it may be. Right now, it really does seem to fit that having it come through the ARPA set-aside dollars that you have for public health funding really makes the most sense. In the future, if we stumble upon another opioid settlement that seems to be some continual funding, maybe that will help offset costs in the future. But certainly, it was the board or the committee's recommendation that this would be a county position, and any municipality that comes forward otherwise, then maybe we could work something out at that point.
And if, if I can, Mr., going back to Commissioner Abingro's about, about the opioid dollars maybe being able to be reimbursed, ARPA type of deal, and I, I did forget one thing, that there is a potential opportunity for us here, and that's still the potential grant that we might be receiving that could help apply towards the, the funding of the new substance use facility. And if that happens, that would, that could potentially then allow us to not access the opioid dollars for the facility, but then use that towards this. So we, so there is still a potential base, depending on the success of that grant, that we could still reimburse that, Commissioner Abingro, as you, you had questioned. So, but we, and I think we'll know that by the end of June, if I'm not mistaken.
Leave the congressional funding, end of June, beginning of July?
Yeah, I, I think somewhere between then and August is what I've heard, so hopefully sooner than later.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to recruit and hire a full-time community organizer to address the opioid epidemic.
I'll second.
A motion is second, any further discussion?
Just to clarify, that motion would include then, for now, that that would be coming out of the public health ARPA reserves.
ARPA reserves, send for a three-year commitment.
Eighteen months for now.
Or eighteen upfront?
I guess the intent is to make that a full-time employee of Clay County.
Yeah, but 18 months of ARPA money, I think, is what.
Okay, use the ARPA money, but it's eventually gonna run out.
I think the reason we came up with 18 months is that would help us in the recruiting process, being able to recruit someone and let them know there's 18 months of financing. But that also allows us, then, a budget cycle to include that within the fold of discussing how we would pay for this position otherwise.
And Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mojo, to add on to that, as been mentioned, we'll hopefully, also hopefully have a better understanding of opioid funding stream at this point. The challenge with the national settlement is they only give us one, one year at a time. And so we, this board recently signed on to the Walgreens, Tevia, Walmart lawsuit settlement, and so we'll be getting some additional funding, not, probably not as much as the $60,000 to $70,000 annually for our first one, but somewhere maybe around half of that, so.
So as you stated earlier, Kathy, through 2024. Correct?
Yep, initially, and we, yes, thanks Commissioner Krabnikoff. We also know that anytime we have grant funding or additional funding, that it's based on, the employee is there as long as the work is there and the funding can continue, but we also know that sometimes that funding doesn't continue, so we'll have to take that year by year.
Just a point of order, on the motion, I'd like to include that 18 months would be covered with ARPA funding.
That's fine.
Very good. Okay, we got a motion is second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Rory.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, Matt, next name we got is the right-of-way easement on Clay County Memorial Forest.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Yeah, I'm here before you to request consideration of adopting a permanent right-of-way utility easement through the Clay County Memorial Forest property. This would be granted to the Red River Valley Cooperative Power Association, essentially for electrical and possibly a telecommunications in the future line running along the south side of US Highway 10. And so this easement would be in the north 200 feet of the property, and it would be essentially a 20-foot easement. It would be a permanent easement. The co-op would be responsible for any damages that would, would occur. This did come before the county-owned lands committee at their last meeting. There was some discussion about trees in the memorial forest. The memorial forest was established in 1958 during the, by the state centennial committee, the county-state centennial committee, and about, I think, 11,500 trees were planted as a living memorial to Clay County citizens. And in the 60s, early 60s, '64, Highway 10 was expanded, and there was, the right-of-way was expanded there, and in, and the trees were young enough at that time where they actually transplanted a number of them. And, and so they were able to do that. Now, at this time, we're probably not gonna be transplanting these trees because they're quite large. But we did work with the, the co-op and modified the easement to basically state that, that the county would, would have to approve any cutting of trees if it were necessary. And so the, the idea is to avoid that impact if, if possible. And no trees would be cut down at all without any approval of, of the county. So if it's a large evergreen tree, probably shouldn't cut it down, but some of the smaller undergrowth, that would be, need to be cleared out and removed. Any questions for me at all?
Is this Memorial Forest, is anybody go there, or is it used for anything, or is it just dedicated Memorial Forest?
Well, Jackie might go there, I guess, to shoot some pictures for families and stuff. It's, it's intended to be open access to the, to the members of, or to the residents of Clay County, essentially kind of like a formal-informal kind of park situation.
Okay.
Yep.
I mean, I'm not for cutting down trees and stuff like that, but I don't know if that would do too much damage, cutting down a few trees.
I went there last week, and there was quite a few mosquitoes, so I would not recommend going at this time of year.
Okay, very good there. With that down. Did you have something to say, Jenny, or excuse me?
I, I just appreciate that Matt has brought this forward. It really does seem to make sense. They're potentially working with the rows in which the trees have been planted, and I agree, if we can not cut down trees that have been planted in memorial of someone, I would be for that. Surely the undergrowth is not something that's been dedicated that way. So if there's no other questions, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the right-of-way easement.
Go ahead. Is this gonna be underground lines, or are they gonna run?
Yes.
Okay. And I've seconded that.
Okay, we got a motion is second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, performance management, participations and results. Darren?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. So it's that time of year again. I've been doing this since I got here. The first report that we did was in 2011, and it's for our performance measurement program. It's run by the state auditor. And so each year, we have to, we have to provide a report on measurements, programs that each of the departments give us, public health, safety, and as you can see from your packet, all the categories that we have. And so we have to provide this report, results, to the state auditor by July 1st. And along with that, the board has to decide whether they want to continue the program for 2023. And so in your packet, you'll see a resolution for that. In 2022, or for the 2022 report for 2021, it's always one year behind, there was 38 cities and 28 counties in the state that participated. Like I said, we've been participating since 2011. And by doing that, the state auditor then sends us a check for, last year it was $9,172, which is about 14 cents per capita is how they, how they determine that, that amount for, for participating in this program. So the report that's attached is for 2022, the resolution. The resolution would be to continue the performance measurement program into 2023, which would then be reported on July 1st of 2024. This report will be posted on our website for 90 days, and I think that is it unless you have any other questions.
Well, see, in the last seven years, we had 100% rating, the way it looks on.
Yeah. We're -- each year, I mean, there isn't dramatic changes. You know, some years are better than others, but overall, it's not a difficult report to put together. It doesn't take a ton of my time, because a lot of the stuff that is in the report, the departments are tracking anyway.
Okay.
So usually about this time of year, I send out the request, they send the reports, their information back, I put it in the report, and kind of that's the extent of it, really.
Very good. Can't see why we wouldn't want to continue that for getting another $9,000.
Yeah, it's close to $10,000 for participating, so not bad.
Overapproval. Second.
Yeah, the motion is second to approve continuing performance measurement. Any questions, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Request approval to submit request for quotes for legal services.
I think, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, as you are certainly aware, Minnesota statute requires counties to maintain court-appointed attorneys for indigent clients. In our commitment guardianship and conservatorship contract, we recently had a resignation, and we're here before the board today to request RFQ to obtain competitive quotes from qualified law firms or attorneys to fill this contract. Currently, we're looking to fill the contract from August 1st through December -- excuse me, through December 31st of 2024, so about a little less than a year and a half. And so the RFQ as attached was completed by our county attorney's office, and so we're just looking for your approval.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Want a clarification on the length of the contract is -- wouldn't we seek out a new contract with RFQ? So why would it be less than 18?
I think the thought process, and we discussed with the county's attorney's office, would maintain the same schedule as the other three contracts.
Okay, that makes sense.
Any further questions?
Make a motion to approve the submission of a RFQ for legal services for the commitment guardianship and conservatorship contract.
Second.
Yeah, we've got a motion, a second, to request quotes. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, now for a highlight of the meeting. Mr. Roers, nice. Thanks for having me coming.
Thank you. That's pretty nice to be the highlight of the meeting, I tell you. So for the record, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, my name is Jim Roers and my daughter Shannon Roers-Jones, and we're here to give you a brief update on the downtown Morehead redevelopment project. And so I thought maybe I'll start by just maybe telling you a little bit, giving you a little bit of the status of where we are and how we got here, and then opened the floor for any questions that you might have. As you know, about three years ago, we were hired by the city of Morehead to be a predevelopment partner of theirs, and we're still under that particular contract right now. And is that okay with you, Mr. Chairman? Okay, I was sensing maybe you wanted me to go in a different direction.
Great idea.
Okay. And during that time, we were charged to acquire as many of the parcels that could be acquired during the predevelopment phase in order to gain control of the Morehead Center Mall, and then to come up with a vision of what we could do with the Morehead Center Mall. And that's all taken place, and I'm sure most of you have seen or had the opportunity to see the rendering that we produced, along with the city and the community, of what we could envisage the downtown to look like. As we did that, we acquired about 97% of the ownership of all of the property in that 18-acre tract of land. Now that we're at that point, some of the other things that we've been discussing over the past two and a half, three years have started to percolate and come to the top and are at a point where they're ready to become a reality. Specifically, the one thing that you're all aware of is probably the library/community center that we've been all talking about. A bond issue was passed, money has been allocated, and we are now -- we now have hired the final architectural team to do the final assessments with the community to determine what it's going to look like and where it should be and when it's going to be built. Those things are going on as we speak. The when is about going to be next year. Okay? The other part that's important to know is that we've also been working with other developers in the community, and one of the developers that you probably are all very familiar with is Kevin Bartram. Bartram -- No, it's not Bartram, that's an old name. MBA. And Bartram goes back with me about 35 years, so. But at any rate, Kevin has stepped forward, and he is also ready to break ground in the spring. That being said, now we're in the next phase of our development process where we need to acquire the last parcels. The law is very clear about how we need to go about and do that as it relates to a condominium association that is no longer functioning properly and needs to be converted. And so we have done that. We have -- we are following what the state statute tells us to do, and we have served notices on not only the tenants, but primarily the last six owners about what our intentions are as it relates to developer, as it relates to the development of the project. Of those last six parcels, one of them has already signed an agreement and said, okay, you know what? The real truth is, we want to retire. So that, we're down to five. Of the last five, four of them are now in communications with us, saying, okay, what's this going to look like? How can we get to a final agreement? And we're honing in on those every day. We meet with another group, and we get a little bit closer, we get a little bit closer. And I'm quite confident we will accomplish this mission by approximately January 1st, okay, of next year. Now, you, I know, are probably most concerned about the motor vehicle department, which is one of the major, the long-term tenants, of which there's only three long-term tenants in there. The other two long-term tenants that we have, we found other options for them already. The motor vehicle people, we're constantly communicating with them. We have no intentions of putting them out on the street. We are going to work with you as long as it takes. And I know that, you know, Steve has expressed to us the long-term vision of the motor vehicle division is to have their own facility someplace more accessible to truck, trucking, and all that. Our goal is to help you get there when it's appropriate for you, okay? If someone was to let you believe that we're going to put you out on the street, that's absolutely the farthest thing from the truth. We will not put you out on the street. We will work with you. So that, I think, is the state of the state. Shannon, is there something I might have missed? I just, you know, from a high level, I could get into the weeds on a lot of things, but I don't think that would be productive. But I'm certainly willing to answer any questions that you have, even if I have to get into the weeds.
I guess I don't have any questions, but I -- we're going to be giving an update through our committee reports today on our -- on some of our activities with our DMV, and maybe it would be good for you to hear that while you're here. We're -- right now, we're just about complete with our feasibility phase, and we've got a design phase, I should say, preliminary design phase. And that is -- and we've got a -- we've looked at multiple locations within the city, and we have one that I think we've -- that's a real front-runner for us. That's going to work the best for us at this stage. One of the things that we aren't interested in doing is moving into a temporary location. That would be not -- just not right for that business and our customers throughout the county. It takes them a while to get educated on where we are and then to go someplace just to move again. We don't want that. Having said that, we're, you know, we're still -- we're working at as fast a pace as we can to get our own facility. Keep in mind that when we originally entered into the original three-year lease and why we had asked for a two-year extension on there was because of the retrofit that we put in there, and to really to get the most bang for our buck was to be able to be there that five years to, you know, help make that affordable. But, you know, I don't think the county's been in the position where we want to stay in or get in the way of redevelopment that's going on there, you know? So we're doing due diligence, I think, on our part to move on. And, you know, I think we'll be discussing a little bit more now, and I know one of the things, you know, I think the original timeline that we had was to maybe go out to bids on something in the spring of next year with taking a year to construct. One of the -- and part of the reason why we wouldn't go out to spring was some of our contractors had said the winter conditions might not be affordable for us to -- I mean, it might be costly to add winter conditions to a project, a construction project. So right now, we're even looking at, and we've had -- we just had some discussion on that just yesterday, on what those winter conditions really are, and could we expedite even to going into a fall type of a start of construction, which would then, you know, speed things up. But that's where we are right now as at the county in, you know, and this board ultimately has to make those decisions, but our committee is going to be ready shortly to make some recommendations, so.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, that couldn't dovetail better into our plan than what you just described, because two of the tenants that we're talking about that are going to relocate are going to relocate in Kevin's product, which, again, he's going to start in the spring, too. So by the time that gets done and comes online, timing's going to be good. If you do the similar thing, timing's good. We're looking at the location, the physical location of the library slash --
Community.
Thank you, community center. We can work around all that. We can work around you. We can work around the other people that want to stay there. So it couldn't work better, frankly. So don't -- yeah, and we will work with you. If it takes longer, we'll work with you. So and again, as negotiations call, things change, but nothing is going to get done without us having a conversation.
Sure.
Anything that you hear in the streets that's contradictory to that, please call me up direct, and we'll definitely iron out issues, because every day we get -- every time we meet with somebody, we find another challenge, but we also find another solution.
Any other questions? Shannon, we're ready for your speech.
Mr. Chairman, I have no prepared speech. I'm here as support and fact-checking mainly.
Did he do all right, or?
What's that?
Did he do okay?
He hardly got anything wrong.
Okay, nice to hear.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, appreciate you giving us the update. As Kevin said, we are doing whatever we can to get our part going.
Right. Mr. Chair, maybe a point of clarification. We have communicated to the public that the north side is probably the best access. I think when the trailer and fence came up a week and a half ago, we had some questions from the public. Does that fit as the best access in your -- from your perspective?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it does.
Okay, we'll continue that dialogue.
I just wanted to comment. I look forward to the day where I can come here, and we're generating about 10 times more tax revenue for the county.
We look forward to that.
That will be a good thing.
Thanks, guys.
Good luck in that project.
Oh, well, we have --
Well, you said that -- you said you had an update in your committee report to stick around.
Well, I kind of basically gave that update now, so while you were here, so. You probably heard what I was going to share within my committee report, so.
Okay, thank you all.
All right.
Okay, let's stick us into committee reports. Dave, you want to start us out?
On the 8th, I attended the Red River Regional Dispatch Center Board of Authority meeting, had a facility plan update for the new PSAP, the new dispatch center we're planning. The Cass County Commission has signed an agreement to refine the construction estimates. I have an architectural firm they've signed with. Mary Philippi, the director of the dispatch center, will be the point of contact for the architects while they're working on this. An update on the site, as you're aware from previous reports, we have selected a location in North Fargo's industrial park, and at this time, Fargo Fire Chief Dirksen is preparing an agreement that, on behalf of Fargo, that he wants to take before the Fargo Commission for approval, and then it'll be brought to the dispatch center for review, and we'll come to some arrangement on getting the property lined up. The finance committee report, got it right here. The final budget was put together and voted on. It had been approved. It brought the -- there was a downward salary adjustment because of some resignations and new hires, so it was an increase from 5.83 to 4.14%. There's a COLA that has been agreed to, which is the average of all the partner agencies, COLAs that they've done, and it's going to be -- it's from the previous year, and that'll be 3.7%. The budget passed, and I believe they were requested, send a copy to Mr. Larson. You got that?
Commissioner.
We had a confirmation on the fiscal agency. It's been agreed to in the joint powers agreement that Cass County would be the fiscal agent for the dispatch center. That's had to have been put off, and Fargo will continue through the end of the year to be the fiscal agent, because Cass County is making some changes in their accounting system, and it'll be easier to initiate first of next year. So we approve that. And that completes my report on the dispatch center meeting. After that, went to a diversion authority lunch and learn with Commissioner Campbell as well, and it was a discussion on P3 non-conformance and non-compliance tracking system. And it was as interesting as it sounds. We got a lot of good, very technical information on how the public-private partnership is tracked on the various objectives they have in building a diversion. If they're not in conformance, they're given the opportunity to correct it. If not, they're found non-compliant, and a point system is put together for penalties on non-compliance of $9,000 each point. And I think that they have a fair system, and they have a method that gives the contractors opportunity to correct any mistakes they're making, and it's all going to have to shake out over the next several years as we build. But it was great to get that information, because when you hear this discussion in the board meeting and you've not been given some of the nitty-gritty details, it's -- it can be a little frustrating. So they've done a good job keeping us as board members educated. And that completes my report.
Okay, Paul?
Thank you. On Tuesday, June 6th, I had our Law Library Board of Trustees meeting, and just it was my first time at the meeting, so I met the other members. my first time at the meeting, so I met the other members. The financials appear to be in very good shape, right where they feel comfortable having them. We did a little education session, for me mainly, I suppose, to understand what the law library provided and what it does for its citizens. And it's that opportunity for people that want to either defend themselves, know more about law, and this is non-criminal, so civil cases, that they have a place to come. We have a full-time person, well, not a full-time, but a person there for hours to have it staffed, Nathaniel Craig, and he's there to help people all the way through. We also offer a service for self-help, and it's a law clinic. And it actually assists people in filling out court forms and also learning about what's needed in law procedure. So, they did, they have continued to have increased use, and with that, they've increased their staffing hours. I see there, I noticed on the way in, they're on the front of the courthouse building, but mainly the hours of our library now are Monday and Tuesday, 9:00 to 2:00 p.m., Thursday from 9:00 to 2:00, and Friday from 9:00 to 1:00. So, that's good. And clinics, they're held on the first and third Tuesdays and Thursdays, Tuesdays and Thursdays. So, anyway, that was pretty education for me and a very, very good service for Clay County. The next meeting I attended was the Clay Soil and Water Conservation District Board meeting. That was on June 8th at 3:00. The main items there that we discussed was that we now have an office that's fully staffed, two new employees. One came about a month ago, and the other one, who was a tech, just came in about a week ago. So, they're all up and running. It's been a busy tree season out there, and they're pretty well have everything done, getting the matting down, and then the no-tail drill is out in action for people that are needing to get some crop in the ground without telling it. We had a report from the Board of Soil and Water Resources give an update briefly on legislative session outcomes. The big win for soil and water was something that, while I was on this board for 37 years, we did come through legislature where we call it Soil and Water Conservation District Aid. So, the money no longer will be debated every other year in the omnibus bill out of the general fund. It will be coming through the Department of Revenue, much as county aid, and they received $15 million upfront, and then that will drop to $12 million a year. So, adequate funding, similar to what they've had, and it will give a lot of stability to the organization as they work with staff. There was a lot of new environmental money that came out of the budget in ways of soil health, water quality and retention, and then on to our, what we're active with here also with our watershed districts and the one watershed one plan. These monies out of the Clean Water Fund, which is the legacy amendment. So, all those things increased. They're active and they're busy. They're preparing their county budget for us to be talking to Steve shortly. Another thing, they did some more tree planting down at the Crestwood site on County Road 12, down by the river. I think 300 trees or so, new trees were planted down there. And I guess the only other thing, talked a little bit about the, briefly about the rural water supply that possibly coming to light in Clay County or toward Clay County. And then also, I'll just shout out, I had been the president of the State Association for two years, well, 22 and 23, or excuse me, 21, 22. And the previous president before me passed away the same day as the meeting, so that was a bit of a shock. And anyway, so the, the association is very thankful for Raleigh, Cleveland service, so. That's what I have. Jenny may have a little more on it. She was at the meeting. And then last night, I was at Buffalo Red Watershed District Board Meeting, their monthly meeting. They had their annual audit. They're all in good standing. There really was no things of concern. One of the ones, much like we work with the River Keepers also down in the Barnesville High School, they have a River Watch team, and they received a $500, $600 grant, and they do watch water levels and some water testing to help the MCPA. Financial reports look good, and probably the biggest discussion, I guess, that would really concern or maybe of interest with a group at Clay County. It's called Project 94, and that's down Whiskey Creek. And if you all remember, we talked about Country Classic Cabinets. They have a very growing business right along the creek, and just south of them, there's problems on two county roads, County Road 21 and County Road 55. And it backs up there, and this year in particular, with a quick snowmelt, it was problematic and was going into, up into where the facilities are. So, Derek Severson was there, the owner of the, of the business. It was really a good tone, highly supported by the whole board that we need to make this a priority. Let's see what we can do, start looking for some long-term funding, move the project priority up to help all of that. And then also, they'll also, you know, we all know if Derek had, could put a ring-dyke around that, that would be problem solved. And so, they're actually going to do some measuring and survey work on that, so we have that option and alternative. But we certainly don't want to lose his business to flooding, you know, as he has a good growing business taking shape down there. The other thing, they have reviewers that are part of the watershed, and they go out and see spots for land determination, projects along ditches. And the three that we have are a little older, and anyway, they're meaning, well, one in their 90s, so anyway. And anyway, so, not that they won't be helping, but they're looking for others to join it. And so, anyway, that discussion's getting going, and it's perhaps maybe through, we'll reach out to the townships and also the SWCD, you know, in, on the reaches of the Buffalo Red, and maybe pick up a few more people to help on that. Also, I had mentioned this, or Jenny had mentioned this in before, they're putting together a flood management plan with ideas. That'll be just really something they can have in writing on their website, Facebook, maybe the Barnesville paper, that when we come in the springtime, it's a way of letting the citizens know what the watershed does or doesn't do in flood events. So, again, well, that'll be coming for, in probably a final form next month. And then two last things, again, with the legislature, probably the biggest thing, doesn't really affect too much the Buffalo Red, but it's important, but they did raise the general levy to $500,000. In the past, that'd always been 250. We get a higher level levy as part of being the Red River Basin. However, this money, our administrative charges that happen every year now can be raised because they always max out every year. So, it gives them a little more latitude in the work they do between administrative charges and actual projects. And then last but not least, the thing we're paying attention to here in Clay is on June 26th, we'll have the hearing for the Stony Creek restoration, and that will be at the watershed office on June 26th at 7:00 p.m. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also attended the SWCD meeting, as Commissioner Kravenoff reported on. We did approve a one watershed one plan project that was requesting assistance, a cover crop for halgs, and then approved the one watershed one plan project requesting payment for the Buffalo Red Water and Sediment Control Basin projects. The only other item I might elaborate on is because the office is fully staffed, which we're really excited about, that does create a little bit of issues in regards to enough vehicles for staff to get out and do the work. I did encourage them to talk to the county in regards to the enterprise leasing that we've done. Maybe that's not an option for the short term, more for the long term, but I'm really excited about that opportunity. And then I attended the Clay Cloney Withdrawal Management Planning Meeting. We had our first construction meeting on site. Was that yesterday? The excitement is that we have a permit in hand from the state, so we are really excited about finally having that. That's been a long time coming. We are working on the city permit in hand. I understand that at 4:00 p.m. today, they had their first large concrete pour, so we're really excited about getting the ball moving on this project. Working on some final issues, ASI issues, adding some smoke seal in some of the areas that was noted, and then making sure that there ADA benches in the shower housing areas. And other than that, we'll continue to update the progress, but a lot to happen in the next 90 days, particularly out there. And then that concludes.
Question?
Yeah.
So, is there any, it sounds like as the permit came through, there was no surprises on any type of, is that?
No surprises. We, we did have one component of B3 requirement that we asked for a variance on months ago. That's separate from this, but no, no surprises.
Okay. Last Tuesday, you didn't report in the Highway Tracking Committee, did you?
I haven't given my report yet.
Why don't you take, why don't you be next then?
Okay. I could go after you, Mr. Chair, if you want.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. All right, on June 6th, we had a Highway Tracking Committee meeting and several items. We had more discussion on that 70th Avenue discussion up around the.
North side of, north side of the Hutter Heights.
Yes, and there's, there's some concern on the part of our highway engineer in terms of the quality of that road. And, you know, I think he's, you know, he asked about, you know, at some point in time where, because it's, it's to the point where it's wrecking some of our equipment. So, you know, we, I think we suggested that he send them a letter with some, maybe some corrective actions that they could, that they could take, including gravel and watering in the meantime, until they come up with another solution, short of not, of us not maintaining it at all, so.
At this point, we're not maintaining it. It's closed, road's closed.
Oh, okay, okay, all right. All right, and then the diversion authority, we had some discussion about the longstanding MOU that will be coming before this board, and that basically just talks about how the agreement between Clay County and the diversion authority will be for operations and maintenance on everything once it's, once it's complete. And I think we're getting, I think one of the, one of the hurdles to get by was the area of Holy Cross Township. I think that's getting closer to being resolved, which is a good thing. And then once that's done, and we, we will be bringing forward that MOU for discussion here. We had a discussion on the 11th Street Underpass Project, the bridge project. I think that is now slated to begin next year. The Moorehead did receive their final funding on that. One of the big issues that we had been debating and having dialogue with the city on was the ownership of the Center Avenue Bridge, the north bridge of the two. It was Burlington Northern's position that they wanted, and they wanted, and the state wanted the city and the county to own that bridge. Both the state and the city and county have always preferred BN. Burlington Northern owned those bridges. And it sounds to me, it sounds like now that Burlington Northern has agreed to do that, but they want, they wanted to waive their financial commitment of $5 million to the project. And it sounds like MnDOT is saying that's the way they want to go. So, we'll, we'll see there, there might be more developing on that. Then we had updates on the Glendon Turn Lane, Casai 18 Project, Casai 26 Project. Casai 18 is July, Casai 26 is August. There, they had four box culverts that were started last week. There was some pavement buckling on Casai 11.
That road's closed too.
That road is closed too? Okay. Do we have, okay, I'm glad we have some roads open.
Yeah.
And then, and then their dust control and graveling has begun, and they're, we were looking for a new maintenance worker, position opening. Then on the 7th, June 7th, we did have the Dispatch Center Budget and Finance Committee meeting. Commissioner Ebberger reported on, on that. I just wanted to point out that what it boils down to is Clay County's increase. Originally, we had thought that it was going to be a 5.8 or 5.7. It was down to 4.2, which is an increase for the year of $18,000. That, that's Clay County's responsibility. I think Dave pretty much covered everything else on that. I don't have anything to add to that. Then the, we had the actual dispatch board meeting. Oh, I wanted to also state that, that on the 7th, and after that, I did meet with Corey Bank from Solid Ways. He had asked to just maybe review his budget a little bit, so we had some, I just gave him some tips on what to do and how the process going, because there's two different financial seats that he works with. And Steve was also, joined us on that. Then on the 8th, the regional dispatch meeting, that was covered by Dave. I don't have anything to add on that, other than I just want to point out that the, Dave mentioned that we did, that the site was approved in the industrial area. It's where their safety building, public safety building is now, and, and so, everything is working out right. And I just, I just want to point out that, you know, I think that was not a unanimous decision on that location. I think Commissioner Ebberger and I, we felt strongly that we needed to listen to the recommendation of the executive committee, and the executive committee of the three sites highly recommended. That was their choice, was that. And we take that seriously. And on that, executive committee is Sheriff Empting, it's the Moritz Fire and Moritz Fire Chief and Moritz Police Chief, and then at large, or the small cities, I think it's Mr. Voxland, I think is, Barnesville Police Chief is part of that. And so, those people had recommended that. I also attended a diversion lunch and learn that Commissioner Ebberger talked about, and he did talk about, you know, the point system and $9,000 of points, and really what, what that whole thing is all about, it's about everybody being accountable. And right now, just to, for example, right now, there was, there was about 500 points sitting out there that, to the tune that there would, that's, that equates to about $4.5 million in penalties. million in penalties. Now, obviously, that gets their attention, and they have the ability then to do corrective actions to bring those points back down. But that's just how that system works. And I think it's extremely important for, for everybody to understand that, that there is a, an accountability process in there when you're dealing with that triple, that triple partnership. June 12th, we had the Clay County DMV pre-design meeting. Again, I think it's, you know, we've, we've gotten a first look at, at some numbers. I think, is that going to be coming, Steve, is that-
It could be as early as next week, where we are looking for some information yet from Clay McCarty.
Okay, yeah. So we do have some numbers, and, and again, like I mentioned earlier, while the Roars were here, we, you know, we've been kicking around sites and looking at sites, and I think our committee is at the point where we're ready to make a recommendation, but we'll, we'll reserve that till next week as well. And I think there were some deals that we're looking at in terms of, you know, we want to determine if, is it feasible, and does it make sense to, with where we're at right now, do we want to speed this process up in terms, and save on cost escalation versus winter conditions? So we're kind of looking right now to determine, just for example, we've, you know, we've heard from our contractors that winter conditions could be $150,000 to $200,000, you know, if you proceed to do it during the winter. But at the same point in time, we've heard from, from our architects that the cost escalation by waiting could be a half a million dollars. So we have, we have to, we need to fine tune those, and it could be that it might be in our best interest to speed this thing along from a financial savings standpoint. Okay, I'm just about done. And then we had the Substance Use Committee meeting. And did we, did we ever, I know that Commissioner Mojo gave a good report, but, but we had that issue with the sanitary line extension that Commissioner Mojo and I did a preliminary, did we, did we report that to this board?
It was reported last week. We haven't brought the change order-
I couldn't remember if we had reported that or not, but that was, but the price had even gone down more compared to what was originally talked about, so. That concludes my report.
Last Tuesday, the Highway Tracking Committee meeting, which Commissioner Campbell's already going through that thing. The only thing is that the Georgetown District Building, Highway Building is now completed, and it's up there in the air. I mean, they're out of the floodplain. It's, I don't know if you drive by Georgetown or not, but you know, drive by that thing, it's up there. So also then, Wednesday evening, I went to Flowen Township meeting up in Felton, it was held, and they're doing pretty good. They're very interested in the water district coming down and going through Felton there, the Felton area. So on that, discussed a little bit about the Felton dates coming up this weekend. On the 8th, beyond the Yellow Ribbon, we had no meeting this month. I don't know if I need to report that, but we did. Okay. And then the DMV meeting, which Campbell's already reported on that. Last night, I went to the Hagan Township and Yulin Township. Neither one of them were, and when I talked about the water district there, at the Yulin Township, there was one of the people in attendance, said he's very interested in that. I mean, he's got bad water, he says. He had to dig a well 250 feet deep, so to get some water in them. So I think, I don't know, we already got that area into water district, so I don't have to do anything further there. Hagan Township's fine, they're doing a good, they're doing a good job of keeping everything together out there. And so is Yulin, so there's no other, no problems came up at all, both meetings, so it's all good meetings. That was my meetings. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I participated on the 6th, the Highway Tracking meeting. Just a couple of extensions from what we've discussed. And the pavement buckle on Cassa-11, there's three areas that they had to patch. They've conducted two of the three patches. They're open to finish that, the final patch later this week. Also in regards to the Spring Prairie, 70th Avenue, Justin is out there this evening, continuing that discussion, both with Terracan and Spring Valley, in hopes to come into a conclusion. Spring Prairie, sorry. On the 6th, I met with Sheriff Empting on some hiring issues, also some discussions on the funding that they received from the state, different ideas. The 7th, I also met, as has been mentioned by Commissioner Campbell, Corey Bang, and Solid Ways Budget. I also, that afternoon, met, the administrator touched back with the representatives from Cass County and City of Fargo in regards to shared interest budgets, Triple RDC. Also, had multiple conversations this past week with Derek LePointe from downtown Moritz Inc. Again, I just want to extend appreciation for Derek and the work that he does, and through the county in providing us updates on, on all things happening within Clay County. On the 8th, I went to Fergus Falls and met with our MACA Region, Region Number 7. Talked about some of the legislative impacts that have come about, staffing ratios, union notifications, public safety funding, opioid, or excuse me, marijuana. And so those are all, information will be coming out from AMC for some additional impacts there. On the 8th, participated, we're looking at updating the fleet policy, those that utilize our fleets and also that use personal vehicles. That will be coming before the board in coming weeks. On the 9th, talked with Darren on a series of HR issues. Yesterday, participated in the DMV pre-design meeting, that has been well covered, and also the Clay County Withdrawal meeting. On the 12th, met, also talked with Commissioner Kravenoff on a series of different issues. Today, we had supervisor meeting. If you recall back at our inner governmental retreat, one of the ideas of, that was brought forward as far as leadership would be to re, bring back our supervisor meeting, so Darren will be leading that. But we had our first meeting this afternoon, and our hour meeting went, about two hours. So it was good, good to see, have a good turnout from our supervisors. We appreciate the department heads moving forward and encouraging their supervisors to attend. We have AMC District meeting tomorrow, or Friday, excuse me, this week at Fergus Falls. And also, also a note to our citizens that will be closed next Monday for Juneteenth. That concludes my report.
Your meetings are on, no, you got to have Jackie schedule your meetings there. We got pretty close here again, Jackie. Good job. Any other thing? Very good. We're adjourned.